Should I go ahead and get started?
I'd say, okay, yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the January 5th, 2021 Northern Lebanon School District Committee meeting. I now call this meeting to order. Happy New Year, everyone. This meeting is being recorded. Thank you for joining us virtually this evening. Please know that all webinar community member participants will remain on mute during the meeting, unless they have put in a request to speak during the public comment period. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by four o'clock this evening via email or online form. Mrs. Martin, could we start with a roll call, please?
Yes. Gray?
Here.
Erdman? Baller?
Here.
Marlo?
Here.
Murray?
Here.
Line?
Here.
So Kelly?
Here.
Nom?
Here.
Bucks?
Here.
Director Erdman, absent all the members are present.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number three is adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved?
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Mrs. Martin, it looks like Director Erdman has joined us, so please make note of that.
Will do.
Item four is a presentation by Crabtree Warbach and Associates. I believe we have Mr. Scott Martin with us tonight, or I'm sorry, Scott Cousin with us.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. So I'm here to give you another update and we're kind of at an important milestone where we're going to talk about the Act 34 booklet and upcoming resolution you'll have before you next week. We touch a little bit on the athletic facility improvements, talk about the schedule if we, if you would proceed with that. And then we're going to look at some, finish up with some fun things, look at the exterior design of the elementary school. So the Act 34, we talked last meeting a little bit about this. This, what you see before you is the table of contents, so I'm going to kind of dive a little bit deeper into the contents of the booklet and certainly answer any questions you have. But at the beginning of the meeting, we will give a brief introduction to those present that'll talk about the purpose of the meeting, what Act 34 is about and why we're, why we're there. Then we'll go in and discuss the project need, why, why the, why the new school is needed. And then a lot of these things you'll see on this list are kind of to check off the boxes of what's required to be included in the Act 34 booklet. So we'll give a summary of the current owned buildings and land and then also give a picture of when the project's completed, what will that, what will the current own buildings and land look like? We'll give a review of the options that were considered and this will go back to the facility study that was completed. We'll go a little bit into a high level project description, talk about some of the systems of, of, and site design and things like that. We'll show the site plan and floor plans that you've all seen as, that have been developed to date. And then the next kind of three things, even though this isn't a reimbursable plan con project, we still use the plan con forms in our Act 34 booklet, just because that's, the costs are broken out the way that Department of Education likes to see them broken out in those forms. So we'll go through a series of plan con forms that'll talk, that'll go through detail of the cost and how the costs are broken down. And then that'll eventually lead to line item 10 there, that's the Act, Act 34 maximum building construction cost. And we'll go into a little bit on the next slide, talk about what, what that resolution includes. But then your financial consultant will talk about the alternatives that were considered for the financing piece and talk about any indirect costs that aren't associated with the actual construction of the building. So like operational costs, things like that. And then that'll summarize in a total millage impact or total tax impact to the, to the, to the district. And then in that, on item 12 is the board resolution and then also the public hearing notice that, that was required to be filed prior to the hearing. So at the heart of everything is kind of this board resolution that talks about, that adopts a couple, a couple of different items. One is the maximum building can project cost, or excuse me, maximum project cost, which is just at the current moment, it's just shy of $48 million. And then more importantly is the maximum building construction cost. So this is what Act 34 wants the district to adopt. And right now it's at 40,000, excuse me, 40,356,973. And essentially that establishes the, the cost of construction. And this is the cost of the building construction minus site work plus architectural fees and consulting fees. And what this establishes is for the public to, so they know that what your anticipated costs are. Now, when we come to bid day, that's kind of our budget, we have to be within eight, we can't be more than eight percent of that cost or we'd have to have a second Act 34, Act 34 hearing. A couple of other things the resolution does, it authorizes us to go ahead and average, replace the advertisement. It makes the booklet available to the public and actually gives us authorization to conduct the hearing. So any, any questions on Act 34, the booklet or the resolution that'll be before you next week or anything in, in the booklet itself or the hearing? Okay. So we'll move on to just the update on the athletic improvements. I'll start with the cost estimate. You've seen this before. The one thing I did add, as we get a little bit more detail, the numbers in here have changed slightly, but not significantly. We're still just shy of the $5 million. We always talked about Steckbeck Engineering provided a district wide study of all your athletic facilities and made a series of recommendations. We asked them to say, all right, if, if the district takes this project of the, of the field house and the turf field, what are those improvements would you recommend being incorporated into this project? Some of them are like, you know, miscellaneous bleachers and a softball field or something like that, the district can handle on their own. So what I've done is added that number down below here, so just about five, or excuse me, half a million dollars. Just over half a million. So the total project cost, if you were to do the fields and the turf field and the field house and the additional approved, recommended improvements, you'd be in the neighborhood of five, five and a half billion dollars. So one of the other things we want to talk about tonight was the schedule, so you can get an idea. If you were to decide to proceed with this, this month, what, what that might look like to get this project completed. So similar to the elementary school, this project would go a series of land development approvals. Even though it's a small building and a field, there's, there's an assortment of stormwater management, improvements that need to be made. Whenever you do a turf, synthetic turf field, most municipalities consider that an impervious area, you need to handle all that stormwater. So we have to do a stormwater design, have it reviewed by the county conservation district. So there's a, a approval process that puts the design phase probably about seven months. Looking for final approvals in, in, in July. And then backing into a bidding period while we're still waiting for approvals, you'll see that looking, looking at bidding period in June and looking at start construction in August. Now with the start of construction in August, one of the things we talked internally with your administration team is the way your fields are currently configured, your fall sports season really does not allow you to lose that, that multi-purpose field. And the duration, if we were to start in August, there, there's not going to be, have enough time to have that done by that first fall sports season. So what we would look to do is start construction in August, maybe some of the infrastructure improvements at the stadium, some other, some other minor things. Maybe they can start, get started on the field house, but not looking to do the turf field until after that fall season. So you don't lose, lose the ability to use that field. So then that looks at completing the, completing the schedule in, in March of 2022. And most likely that field house would be completed for the spring sports season. So if you wanted to use it for, for that, that, that would be able to be accomplished. Now, I will say if we, if we are able to get this through the approval process a lot quicker and move the schedule up, then there's a possibility that, that, that if we can expedite things, that we might have enough time over the summer to do the turf field. They need about three months, three good months to do the construction on that turf field. So there's a chance that if, if we get, move it up, but we, we can keep an eye on that through the design phase and keep your abreast of that, whether we, we were able to do that or not. Any questions on the athletic facilities? Scheduled cost, anything else?
So Scott, there would be, there would be a one month bidding process for contractors, is that right?
Yeah, yeah. So we would, we probably do probably about a three week bidding, bidding period on this. What, one of the things we did talk about in, in Fidavia is, is emphasizing this as well is doing a potential combined bids scenario. So we've done this before on, on campus projects where we have a combined bid with the elementary school. So we could do an alternate with the elementary school that includes these, the stadium and, and, and turf improvements as an alternate and then also bid that separately. So you could truly see when the bids come in, what is the most cost effective way to move forward with the district? And then you can, you know, move whatever, whatever is less expensive, you can move forward, whether it's with the elementary school contractor or it's on, on its own, but looking to do, to bid those two simultaneously.
Would you anticipate that there, there could be some savings by having a joint bid, say a contractor were to get both bids? Do you think, based on your experience, there could be some savings on the athletic improvements if we did that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think the one, this kind of falls in a unique sweet spot. I think we had originally, when it was a smaller, just the, just the field house on its own, we, we definitely said, yeah, that makes more sense. You definitely see a bang for your buck and more savings on that economy of scale to have it with the elementary school. Now let's get in a little bit of a larger project. You might attract some site contractors that can maybe do this on their own and not under a GC. That might be able to be a little bit more competitive. But certainly when you wrap this into a larger project, you're going to see some savings, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the athletic improvements?
I'd like to know if we could get a, maybe a price or a bid on a little bit bigger bleacher seating for the turf field? Just because I just see that as, can you hear me?
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, finish and then I'll tell you where we are.
Just because I, when I look at where we're located, like I can see, I can see a lot of schools wanting to play district and state playoff games there as far as for boy soccer, girl soccer, boys and girls lacrosse. So I'm afraid with 400 seats, they might choose to drive 20 minutes down the road and play at Central Dolphin. When really this is a more ideal setting for, especially when you're playing, you know, teams from Schuylkill and Berks County, maybe playing teams from York and Adams and the mid pen conference. Like this could be a great opportunity for, for us to host playoff games, you know, to, for the community and outside communities to see our district and nice PR and great fundraising for, you know, when you host playoff games, you get the, the concessions and all that. So teams that, teams that might not have had some concession money could make, you know, an easy $1,500 that night if say the girls' basketball team decides to run concession stand for a state playoff game. So I just, I don't know, maybe if we could get a price on bleachers that seat 800 or 1,000, that might be something worth just looking at and then discussing.
Yeah, we, we actually, we were tasked, I think, right before break to look at the list of improvements that were recommended by Steckbeck when they came out. We went through that list today and our top priority, actually we felt is the, are the bleachers in the football stadium. And it's not even, I think the quantity is, is important. But none of those bleachers are, are ADA compliant. And frankly, in some cases, I even worry about the safety of, you've been there enough. You know, those railings are, there's big holes in those railings. You can get to that roof of the storage building by just crawling under the seats. You know, where I've seen kids that drop hats and then they climb through there to get onto the roof of the storage shed. You know, that, there's definitely some issues there. I actually said to Brad, I didn't realize this, but there's a picture in his office from 1993, I didn't realize the visiting side had been there so long as well, because they are also not up to spec. So of all the things that were listed, yes, there are some things like the bleachers at the baseball field aren't, aren't compliant, but those are not a danger either. But those football, those football state, the football seating is definitely something we felt we needed to take a look at.
Yeah, and Matthew Director Erdman's comment about the additional seats of the multi-purpose, I think that's an easy thing to incorporate as an alternate bid. An alternate bid is basically we say, base bid, here's what we want you to price, everything that, that we want in, in the project for sure. And then we could do alternates that says, what does it look like to do 800 seats instead of 400? And they'll give an alternate price of what that cost increase is. That way on bid day, you can make that decision based on cost was the best way to go.
Or Nate, are you talking, are you talking about additional seating at the turf too?
Yeah, I was talking about the turf, just maybe having something that held a little more than 400 people. So we could have the ability to hopefully host district and state playoff games.
Sorry, I thought you were talking about the football too, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I didn't realize they were that bad. If they are, that's, I would say if, if safety's an issue, then we definitely need, need to look at addressing the, the stadium bleachers as well.
Yeah, and in that cost of those additional athletic improvements, you'll see that the bleachers was, in that half a million dollars, the, the, it's kind of, if we go down that direction of, of addressing them, it's kind of a, it's, it's going to be a close comparison of cost of, of doing the repairs and adding the baseboards, railings and all that versus just replacing them altogether. That's, but I think the cost that's shown in here is replacing them all together for that half a million.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other thoughts on the athletic improvements or questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one, one question. Are we going to open up the concession stand to the multi-purpose field and the stadium? Or is it just for the stadium?
No, it would be accessible to both fields.
Yeah. In the initial concepts we developed with, with your administrative team, your AD, the field house is oriented in such a location that you enter both kind of a complex, so to speak, of both the multi-purpose field and the, and the stadium. So anything that's part of that field house, which will be the team rooms and the officials at locker rooms and the ticket booth and the concessions and the, and the restrooms will be available to both, both the multi-purpose field and, and the stadium and for that matter, the track as well. Any other thoughts? Okay, moving along. We have been working, we've shown you a lot of concepts along the way. We have floor plans and site plans and how the buildings organized. We always say the form follows function. So now that we have the function now, we can kind of start, we've been starting to look at some of the forms. A couple of things before we look at this, we, we were trying to focus on a couple of different items. One, this is a building that's a larger, that's a large building for an elementary school. So we're looking at breaking down that scale and finding ways to, to reduce the building side, the feel of that building size. And then the other item was to kind of, since it is an elementary school, bring a little bit more playful things in the design so that it feels like an elementary school and not, not so much like a high school. You'll see some of those things in the color. And once again, this is our first pass, doesn't mean that anything's final here, but our first look at it. So just orient yourself. So here is the, the main entrance of the building here. This is the library that sits over top of the administrative area. Walking down the commons, can everybody see my mouse? Okay, this is that commons area that we talked about. And then of course, here's your two-story classroom wings that are organized here. The large glass element you see at the, at, at each wing here are those collaboration spaces. This is the gymnasium here, and then this is the kindergarten with the district administrative offices at the end. So here you could kind of see one of the things we're looking at primarily masonry for the, for the majority of the building as the, the main building material. And then we're looking at bringing in some color. Of course, the district color is blue, so that makes a lot of sense to bring in to the elementary level of that blue. This, looking at a glazed brick here for, for these, for the blue elements here. And then this is a view, kind of looking down that, the bus lane entrance. So here you can see that two-story, two-story classroom wing here and some of those color elements we're looking to bring in. And then accenting the, the main entrance with another blue form here. And you'll see as we move closer in, once again, talking about that scale, bringing in a, bringing in a lower canopy element here that breaks down that two-story element a little bit at the entrance. And then playing with some ideas, maybe bringing in some colored glass at the entrance. This is that library up above here. These are just concepts we're, we're initially studying. And then here you can get a, kind of get a better view of that classroom wing here, looking at maybe a little bit bowler element at the end. Each one, each one of the wings here with that blue with the stair element is. And I'm going to go into another software program here that'll, will be able to fly around the building. One second there. Okay, can everybody see that? So once again, to orient yourself, of course, elementary school is located here, bus loop, faculty parking, parent drop off, the athletic fields over here. And I'm just going to kind of pan around the image here. This is one you already saw. As we rotate around, you'll see some of the other, the other elements here's in between each of the classroom wings. We're looking to bring some outdoor learning space, incorporate that. That hasn't been developed in too much detail yet, but the, these are kind of slated for those outdoor learning areas. And you can see here, this is kind of the view from the corner of, well, an aerial view, but this is the end of the, end of the building that faces the intersection of school and airport. So you can see that kind of creates that element of these three wings here and kind of makes a statement of those blue forms on that, on that intersection. And as we rotate around here, this is that one story element of the kindergarten, the district administrative offices. Here we're carrying, this is the cafeteria. This is the outdoor play area. We're still in the, developing that as far as what that looks like with, with the faculty and the administration. This is the gymnasium, but bringing that form, that blue form again, from, from the front of the building over to the cafeteria so tying those two together. Looking around to the front, once again. The views are coming up. There's another view of that, of that main entry element. And then looking down at the district administrative office on a smaller scale, doing something similar to the main entrance. So it has its own identity and you know where to enter there, but tie and tie in those forms together. So that's kind of our initial concept of, of the building design. Any, any thoughts? Feel free, we're architects, we have a thick skin, so feel free to say, speak your mind, say if you like it, don't like it or anything, any comments you want to have on it.
How many are there type learning? Like I see there's two separate, so does each hallway have an emergency exit as well as an entry out to that area?
Sure. The, from an exiting standpoint, these are the, the vertical elements, the stair elements here. That's where we're going to have the exit at the end of the, end of the wing for emergency. However, each, there's two outdoor learning environments that, that are between the two wings. These collaboration spaces are situated right off of there. So there's going to be an exterior door off those, off that collaboration space. And we can even incorporate a door off the commons here, but there'll be two separate learning areas here. Interior to this learning area, this is actually the faculty dining. So we're going to have a small outdoor faculty area for, for outdoor dining here as well. And then what we talked about from, from the play area aspect, the kindergarten wing has its own, we're going to separate the primary play area from the intermediate play area. But the kindergarten wing will have its own access to the outside here. And there's a potential to even develop a small outdoor learning area for kindergarten wing as well.
Thank you.
Will first through sixth grade be all together in the playground? That seems like that could be a whole lot of kids all at once.
No, no, we would stagger the recess times. I haven't fully thought out, I mean, we, we do that on a smaller scale now. Where different grade levels will go out together. I, you know, I guess, I don't think we've thought through that yet in terms of whether the whole grade level could go out at the same time or you'd even have to split the grade level into maybe, depending on how, you know, how much space there is there, but there would definitely be assigned times. Now you could with this design, you could have an intermediate group and a primary group because they would have two separate areas, but we wouldn't send everybody out at the same time.
Yeah. And when, and when I refer to primary, most likely it's going to be K, K through two. And that'll have equipment that's, that's appropriate for, for that age group. And then the intermediate would be three through six and have more, most likely hard surface area, not as much, you know, playground quote unquote, equipment. And then this area will also be used by the gymnasium class, you know, they'll also be using, of course, the fields across here, but there'll be some areas, hard surface play area here, out here for gymnasium. And then it's located in a key location so that it offers flexibility. As Dr. Messinger mentioned, you know, not knowing how that's going to function, are kids going to flow from the cafeteria to recess? Or is it going to be from the class to recess, the, you know, cafeteria? That's all located right here. So it offers a multitude of ways to, of ways to use that space. Any other?
Oh, sorry. I have a question about those common areas in each wing. Are those rooms equipped with sinks so that if groups are coming together to do experiments and those types of things, that they have that right there?
Absolutely, yep. And that's one of the areas that I mentioned before in our last update. We had our first round of meetings with the faculty and we're kind of trying to define what those areas look like and what functions are in there. And we actually sent out a survey to the staff that were waiting to be completed on, on what those should look like. But we, you know, there's a thought that we make each one of them unique and individual or do we make them all the same? Or, or how are they actually used? So there's one thought, do we make one more of a kind of a large group instruction area that you can gather the whole grade for, for, for a presentation or something like that? And then maybe the others are more that flexible learning environment. But, but certainly incorporation of sinks, you know, we're talking about marker board walls, really a flexible collaborative space that you can do science, you can do STEAM experience, kind of a multitude of different things, you know, independent learning, collaborative co-teaching, you know. But really the key is a flexible space, but yeah, certainly sinks and, and other things like that incorporated.
Thanks.
And Scott, just to piggyback that, Brad and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think at this point you've now met with all our grade levels, our custodians, certainly administration has, has met. And that, and then the specialists too, music, art, library. I think you've gotten through everybody at this point to get feedback. And then I believe we have a follow-up survey coming out in a, in a week or so. Or short, it may even come out today. I can't remember if Brad sent it or not, but. So I think everybody's had a chance to give some input. Brad, Scott, is that correct?
That is correct. The only group we haven't met with and we're meeting with them tomorrow is the district administrative group.
Oh yeah, they, they're not important.
Scott, I did have a question. And maybe this is more of a question for the administration, but, and I don't know the logistics of this, but I think that in the winter when we have basketball, the elementary kids have basketball and gym, gym space for those basketball games and basketball practices and things is hard to. and gym, gym space for those basketball games and basketball practices and things is hard to, I mean, I don't think we have enough gym space right now to accommodate all the teams. And well, maybe we do this year, but in most years we don't. So has that been thought about? I mean, I know that's not really a district-run thing, it's kind of a outside thing, but we don't have any other areas in the district that would be able to accommodate those kids. So I'm just curious if that's been given some thought.
Yeah, yeah, we talked about that quite a bit actually, and Director Urban, and I've had a couple of conversations about the size of the gym. That gym is going to be a full-size big gym. The only other full-size gym that will have, you know, we don't currently have another full-size gym, even in our elementary buildings. We'll be able to divide it in half. And even then, a half of, half of a half would be probably as big as like a Lickdale gymnasium, you know, or maybe a Fredericksburg gymnasium. East Hanover is a little bigger, but it's a weird shape. Jonestown's really the only one that, that has the size to it, but if you, wow, I didn't know you could do that, Scott, but. If you look at that, there's a divider, you can kind of see it on the right-hand side about in the middle, that will divide the court and there's baskets on either end. If I'm a, if I'm a little kid, like if I'm in the, you know, K to two range, I forget how they split it up, but you could really practice a team on either side and have four practices going at the same time. If I'm a little older, you'd probably divide it in half and run it sideways. If I'm at the travel level for fifth and sixth grade prior to coming to middle school, then you're probably trying to find a time where you could run full court, or at least have your games run full court. But we tried to, you could take our high school team and play a game here.
Okay.
Court would be big enough to do that. As a matter of fact, court might be slightly bigger than our current court.
And we did incorporate, you'll see the retractable bleachers on the end here so that if you do want to hold events there, or, or even tournaments, what, you know, if you're using, playing, if someone's playing at the high school, you can have tournaments where someone plays here, whether it be volleyball, basketball. I think we're at, I think around 400 seats here.
Are there locker as well there?
There, there are no current plans, there are not plans for locker rooms.
No, there, there are bathroom areas that are multiple bathroom areas, but, but we didn't include the locker rooms.
Scott, I don't know if this is a architect question, or maybe this is more for the engineers, but you know, I've, I've had people ask me in the community, you know, they don't make buildings like they used to. And why don't we just repair the buildings that we do have? And can you speak to that at all?
Sure. Now, from a structure standpoint, we actually are going to construct it like, like they used to. We're going to, with, with schools, we know how they get used and abused. And, and so what we do is we build our buildings as load-bearing block construction. You know, if you think about CMU or Cinder block, we're using that for all of our walls and also supports the structure. So from a structure standpoint, it is as they used to build them. If you think about replacement of any system, whether it's in an existing building or a new building, it's going to have the same life expectancy as, as, you know, regardless of the scenario. So, so while yes, they, you know, a boiler that might have been made, you know, years and years ago, might last longer than today's more efficient boilers. The fact is that those types of systems, or those newer systems will be placed in either, either renovation scenario or a new construction scenario. Now, that is one thing to note, any system that, that is new and replaced, and whether it's renovated or new, is going to be significantly more efficient, energy efficient than, than systems of the past.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, I have two questions. One is related to function, one's related to form. And I, I think I'll start with the function, and maybe I should have caught this in a prior, in a prior diagram, but I'm thinking about security and fire drills. I'm assuming, and I could be wrong, but I'm assuming that a lot of the space for fire drills or for emergencies would be the field space in between airport road and the three wings there. Is, is there any contemplation or design for fencing along airport road to provide extra security in those situations?
You know, we haven't talked about that yet. One of the meetings that we've, that we're going to schedule is what we call a first responder meeting. And what we like to do is we like to get local fire, police, EMS, things like that, all around the table. Show them our design, get their input, get their thoughts, and, and that's certainly something we can talk about. You know, what does that look like in a fire drill? Do we, do we fence that area? You might have, you know, it might become an outdoor learning environment out there that, that you go into that grass area as well, it's a large area. So that's, that is a valid comment that, that we haven't considered yet, is, is what, you know, what do you do for, for the safety of, of those two roads? And maybe it's a matter of, of providing a fence or something like that in that area.
Okay. And, and then regarding form, and I'm leaning on your architectural thick skin. The design looks very institutional and it's an institution, and that's fine. Was there an attempt or an effort in the design process to sort of match the appearance of this new build with the existing structures across the street? I would imply a negative to that if there was.
Actually, it's funny, so one of the things that we, a couple of the concepts we actually started out with, we, we felt were too institutional, felt too much like a high school. You know, the challenge here is that this is a large building, it's a two-story building, it's, it's a large building for an elementary school. So how do you make that feel like an elementary school and not like a high school? So some of our initial concepts, actually, before we started to integrate the color, felt more kind of secondary nature in, in design. And one of our early concepts actually had some of the yellow incorporated with it. And one of the comments we had from the administration was, well, the yellow, it's a failure over the high school, don't even try to do it here, and you're not going to match the, it's actually gold and the color, you're not going to match it. So, so we didn't try, you know, we wanted this to be its own, its own building and its own form, its own identity. We still wanted to kind of tie it, like I said, tie into those, into those, into the overall district theme of, of, of color and things like that, but at the same time, it wants to be its own building or elementary school, so.
I think, Barry, I think too, I, I think the, I agree with you, when you look at the outside, it has that overfield. We were in one of these buildings that's not identical, but there's a similar structure to it. And surprisingly, the inside of it, though, I felt was, was warm, was colorful and felt elementary-like. Brad was along with us. Brad, what do you think? Maybe, did you get that impression when you were inside that building?
No, not so much. The exterior, like even to look at the pictures, I, I know what you're saying, that it, that it looks institutional, especially from the, the out view. But when you go up to the, the closer look of the main entrance, Scott, I don't know if you have that on handy. I, I don't know, there, there's a totally different feeling to it with all the glass, there's a lot of, there's a lot less brick, there's a lot less structure showing than I would expect in a, in a truly institutional look. So I, I hear exactly what you're saying, Director Nom. From a distance, I agree with you, but when you get up close and you start looking at the elements, I, I think it disappears quickly.
And, and do you agree, Brad, that the inside definitely feels elementary?
Yes, it definitely did. We, we toured both the elementary and the middle school setting, and there was a notable difference between the two environments. Although the, the main hallway, the, the commons as they're called, or the, the main street, depending on whose vernacular you're using, is very open, very spacious, but the space didn't feel overwhelming for younger students. And I think that's important because we, we have this issue of size, you know, that this is a much larger building than what we're used to. And so I think it's important to note that, that there's still components that make them, them feel a part, like ju- just in the structure of the building and where students will have to travel and, and the short distances that they have to go to obtain the things that they need. I mean, that, that's part of the functional design that, that's going on.
Thanks, I appreciate that. And I realize this is, this is largely an exercise of taste and preference, and perhaps a failure of imagination on my part to envision the glass part of the depiction. So I appreciate your, your reflections on it. Thanks.
And you know, one, we could even explore other concepts where maybe this blue form is a little bit more playful, a little bit more elementary-like so that it does feel more, less institutional. So maybe we can develop some additional concepts for consideration. One thing, it's always a fine line, is you don't want to design something that's going to feel dated, like you, certain buildings you can look like, say, oh, that's an eighties building. You want it to be timeless, so you got, it's a fine line between trying to generate something that, that is that playful form that, that is less institutional, but at the same time, is going to stand the test of time, you know, 20, 30 years from now.
And this is, this is Glenn Barrett. I'd like to thank you for kind of pointing that out, as I kind of agree. But if the functionality inside is where it needs to be, you know, I could certainly understand that. But yeah, certainly, especially the aerial view looks, yeah, but good points made, and yeah, I'm open-minded too.
Gary, this might be more for you, but in the fifth and sixth wing, will we be able to have them changing classes? Enough space that they're separated kind of from like the hub of the younger kids so that they are able to interchange, kind of prep them?
Yeah, they're on there, that, you know, the fifth grade will be on the bottom and the sixth grade will be on the top, and they're the only ones there. So, you know, they're going to be able to, you know, we really could run a sixth grade bell schedule if we want to. We have tasked one of our sixth grade teachers and a couple of administrators with developing some suggestions and a plan for that sixth grade because it's, it's important for us to understand a few things as we go into this in terms of how they're going to team or switch for classes and that kind of thing. And, and what teachers are going to want to, want to do, because they're certainly used to the structure we have now. But that may not be the most conducive structure. And you know, as we've talked about academic improvement too, you know, I, I really want this to be a hybrid. I, I don't want the language arts block to be as long as the science block and the social, no offense, Michelle, but when we get out of sixth grade, I want to make sure that we've given those kids the opportunity to be on grade level in both reading and math. And, you know, if that means we have to look for opportunities there for intervention or additional support and extend those periods in some way, then that's something we need to be, be planning for when we open this building. You know, right now it's not conducive to that, you go to your sixth grade class, because we're running on the same schedule that the high school is, 42 minutes later you go to your next period and your next period and your next period. And, but we've tasked them with, with brainstorming that problem, not problem, brainstorming this opportunity. And we'll see what, what their suggestions are, but we have talked about it a little bit.
I think our, our focus group was student success, and I heard a lot about just transitions. So, and I think that that's a big opportunity for us to kind of utilize that as a transition tool to the, to the high school, well, middle school, preschool, but. Good.
I think you'll see some changing of, of classes for subjects. It'll probably be less as you go down through, but even in fourth and fifth grade, I think there's some, there's currently some fourth grade teachers that switch for different, not this year, but in the past have switched. And I think fifth grade too, it's something that, that, that's, you see that a lot in elementary school.
So a lot of great feedback and questions and comments, any, anything else anyone wants to add?
I have an additional question. When we were looking at the front entrance at the stained glass, it looked like there were like four windows that were outlined in yellow. Was there a significance to that?
No, I think that was just a concept to bring, maybe we can look at bringing the molyne, some color into the molyne's and maybe doing, doing an element there, but no, no specific significance.
Okay, all right. I do like the stained glass. I think that that will, that part will definitely feel inviting. And a second comment or really question is, have you started the design of the cafeteria? Have we seen that?
Yes, I can actually.
And Michelle, I, I'm gonna, I don't know, you, you can't see this very well, but I'm going to leave this with Pat. So if you guys are in here, thi- this is some pictures of the interior, some, some buildings, you know, with similar types of, of things, there's, there's the outside courtyards and there's the collaborative spaces. And then there's the cafeteria out of the main street, I think. If you guys want to take a closer look at that, I'll leave it with Pat if you're ever in here for some reason. We're going to give you a reason next week that I won't ruin the surprise, so. But I'll leave it with her if you guys want to take a look, or next time we get together in person, I'll bring it along.
You, you can also visit our website, we have all the, you know, you could look at some of the elementary schools and some of those spaces that Dr. Messinger is talking about. It's www.cra-architects.com, and look at some of those interior spaces as well. So the cafeteria, yeah, we have, we have the initial design of the cafeteria. If you remember, we were locating the stage in between the gym, gym and the cafeteria. So this now becomes a multifunctional space, so you can either pose off the gym and have a performance or something on the stage for the cafeteria or vice versa. And then that's located right off the commons here, and then the kitchen's to the right of that.
And then is there storage space for those tables when you're not using them? I'm sure you guys addressed that, but I just.
There's a table and chair storage over here, so the thought would be on a, on a regular basis, when you're using the cafeteria tables and chairs, this is going to be probably full with actual individual seats, you know, individual chairs. And then if you're having a performance in the, or something in the gym, you'll bring those individual seats into the gym. Or if you're having something in the cafeteria, basically switch the tables into here and, and bring those chairs out. I will say that the, the room is sized, the handle, probably about 75% of the tables and chairs. We didn't want to spend too much money on a vacant storage space. Some of these might just either be used for seating or just be pushed up against the rear wall, but the majority of the tables and chairs can go in there.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts?
The only question is, you said about the 75% storage, is that a common percentage for most schools?
Yeah, I mean, really, to, to put the quantity of tables, all of, all those tables away, you got, it's a, it's a balance of cost, you know, and, and function. You know, do you really want a storage space that's, you know, 15, you know, about the size of a classroom or larger to, to store all those? We could certainly do it, it's just a matter of spending that money upfront, and then the majority of the time, that space, storage space won't be used.
I guess my question is that, what, what most schools go with the 75% as opposed to?
Yeah, that, that's common, because a lot of times you'll find that in the absence of storage space, those tables will just be pushed against the wall, or even those tables will be left out, and if it's an informal gathering or an informal activity on the stage, then you'll just use those ta- the cafeteria tables for seating, and you'll sit on one side.
Well, and keep, keep in mind that we have, we can also utilize the gym for assemblies or concerts as well. So we can take those chairs that are in that storage area, we can take them over to the gym, utilize the gym, because that stage opens up both ways. So there's a, there's a lot of functionality there to either use the cafeteria, or, you know, I, I'm thinking about what we just did with the long-term planning. And if we, if it was not COVID, this would have been an ideal place to probably meet. You know, I, because I could have, you know, to even open and do a presentation at the beginning, I could have stood up on the stage, you know, used the screen, whatever. And then, and we, you know, we were going to do some food and, and we could have broken out from there. So I think there's, there's going to be times where we actually utilize the tables as a, you know, meal slash meeting type of thing for different groups. And then there'll be other times where you put it away, and if, if we need larger size, I think we'll probably move over to the gym. Because I think there'd be even more space in the gym than in the cafeteria for like a Christmas concert or something. Because I think there'd be even more space in the gym than in the cafeteria for like a Christmas concert or something.
Okay. Anything, anything else? Any other space we want to talk about or see?
Can you make it look like? I'm just kidding.
What's that? Make it look like?
Like a Viking ship.
You know, it's funny, we were talking about the athletic facilities in the field house, having some sort of Viking door looking thing that the theme would walk through. So anyway.
All right. Well, thanks everybody for your time. And certainly if, if you see any other, other things between now and the next time we meet, you just relay them along to Dr. Messinger and he'll, he'll get us to the design team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the updates, Scott. It's exciting to really.
Yeah, it is. It is.
Hear all the discussion.
Yeah.
Moving on to item five, our public comment period. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by four o'clock this evening. We have one request for public comment. That is Mr. Andrew Murphy. Mr. Murphy, please state your name and address before speaking and you will have four minutes for public comment. We, yes, we do have.
My name's Andrew Murphy, 1828 Blacks Bridge Road in Anvil. I thought the, the documents for the agenda and everything are supposed to be on the website 24 hours ahead of time. I was going to ask how you can improve a budget without showing it to the public. But today, you, sometime today, you put up the budget numbers. You're looking at spending 48 million for the elementary school. Probably with also looking to spend between the athletic fields and your renovations to the high school. You guys are looking to spend over a hundred million dollars. Is this school approved already? Are we still going to be voting on it? You guys have had very little community input, very little community has actually been out to the events for, because you guys have hardly had them out. And then the community members that were there were expecting to be able to ask questions after the presentations, but you allow no input and no questions from the public. With your, you have pre-scripted questions ready to get the, for your surveys to get the answers you want. So questions should be allowed at the presentations whether you have the meetings. Last year you rose the taxes because you said that you'd never get the tax back that you would be taxing. It, these COVID times are very hard financially on a lot of people. So we're supposed to be cutting back and you guys are just pushing forward and going to spend probably over a hundred thousand dollars on all these projects that you guys are doing for the schools. And this is all when just a couple of years ago, your business manager said, if we don't make some cuts, we're going to be negative a million dollars. It's kind of hard and for me to say to spend a hundred million dollars when you're going to not have the money in there. So, and I'm also wondering if you guys are going to publish the booklet that they just presented on your website as well. So that the public has, is able to peruse it. But I, I think this, you guys have already pulled the lease from the farmer that does the field before you guys even voted on doing the project. You guys have already been moving like this is all a done deal. And you hardly have any community input. I don't think that's right. And you guys need to make some cuts, not just keep spending money.
I, I just want to address, I'm not going to get into some of that. We've discussed some of that and answered some of those questions before. But I am going to address that the budget is not being voted on tonight. That will be up for an entire week. That's being voted on next week. So just to be clear that that is up and it's public and it's, it's going to be there for a week. In addition to that, the Act 34 booklet, which you're talking about, will be published on the website after it is approved next week. It'd be premature for us to put it there until it's been approved. So the voting meeting, with the exception of two personnel issues tonight, the voting meeting is actually next week. And after that is approved, it will go on the website. And that is advertised in the paper. It is scheduled to run on the 13th, the day after the board meeting. So I will address those things because those are, those are things that you asked about in terms of information. The rest of that I think we have addressed and will continue to address at board meetings. And I would encourage if you know someone that wants to give input, just like we did that night, that, that meeting was for Crabtree to present, not for the board to discuss. We encourage those folks to come to the board meeting and to ask questions at that time. And certainly they're welcome to do that at any point in time. We'd love to, to hear from them. So just, just wanted to convey that information out to anybody that, that was listening.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Murphy, and thank you for your explanation, Dr. Messinger. Moving on to item six, items for board discussion notification. The minutes shall note that public notice was given for the meeting in accordance with Act 84 of 1986. Notices and advisements of these meetings will carry the intent that limited business may be conducted on any scheduled meeting date. And that leads us into item seven. We have two items for board action tonight. Dr. Messinger, would you like to speak to these briefly?
Uh, yeah, we had a special education need that came up. We'd like to, rather than wait another week, we'd like to make sure that we have a support person for that individual. And then we also had a, a baby or expecting a baby that, that we have to take care of him. And again, instead of waiting till next week, they're, they're started on Monday. So we're, we're retroactively wanted to vote on that position as well. So to get those, those two needs taken care of.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the employments as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second? Is there any discussion?
Dr. Buck.
Uh, yes.
Can you have someone show the agenda? Cause the.
Can you say that again? My, you cut out.
Sure. I pulled up the agenda online and it does not have that second item listed on the agenda that's on the website. So if, if it's possible to put that on the screen for anyone viewing before we approve that second item, at least I'm not seeing it. If someone else is seeing it on the website, please let me know.
I think it is.
I see it on the website. Do you see a letter B? It, it's in the same paragraph. It reads a little confusing, but it's in the same paragraph.
A letter A and a letter B.
Ah. I see that now. Thank you. I, I was zooming in and I couldn't find it and I kept scrolling through. I'm sorry for the interruption.
No, no problem. Thank you. All right. I think we were at discussion. Is there any discussion on that, on the approval of these employments? Hearing none. This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Then we move on to item eight, that is items for our consent calendar that will be voted on next week. We have items 8.1 through 8.4. Dr. Messinger, did you want to discuss those?
Yeah, it's our typical items, approval of minutes, approval of the student activity account, approval of cash disbursements. One thing that is a carryover from a reorganization meeting, those two, those two committees that we couldn't quite figure out. Joanne Beaver actually has been representing us at the Lebanon County Area Vtech School Authority. That's a four-year position. And, and it's really just that when they go through that audit for them, that, that they're a part of that and looking at that and get presented that information. It comes to us then directly from TCC. And it, it's not something that I discussed with her. So that's kind of why we didn't make that connection. But, but she's willing to continue to do that for another four years unless somebody's really excited about the auditing of those records. Not that she's doing it, but the presentation of it. And then the other one, Steve was actually part of this and, and since Kale has taken over his position, Kale would serve as the district member on the Lebanon County TCC Executive Committee. And Leanne would be the alternate for that. So you guys are off the hook for those responsibilities will continue if that's okay with you guys.
Are there any questions on those items? All right. Moving on to item nine, that is budget and finance.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna, I'll go through quickly, but then Leanne's going to say a few things. So we'll come back to it. Number one is that proposed preliminary budget. Like that, that is a, it is exactly what it says. It is a preliminary budget. And we did not do it this way last year. We had, last year we had voted to stay under the, the amount, the percentage amount last year. And then did not have to present a preliminary budget. This year with COVID and the uncertainty, we didn't go that route. So Leanne put together a preliminary budget that is really focused on, there, there is no revenue increase in it. And, and you know, the, the normal expense increases that occur were there. And then she had to make that balance. And, and in order to do that, you, you have to, if you're not going to increase revenue, you have to do the taxes for it. So it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean anything. It doesn't mean we're going to answer a tax increase necessarily. It doesn't mean that we're going to be flat funded revenue wise. But she's preparing a kind of a worst case there. And I'll let her talk about that in a minute. But I will also say the other things on there. Approve the district's depositories, custodial institutions, investment advisors, financial advisors, paying units and account signers. Those are all listed there in a document for you. And there, then there's a service agreement with TW Vanessa. There's an authorization of which is typical for us to make budget transfers between one account to another if needed. And then there's a resolution which was talked about by Scott. Those are those maximum project costs and maximum building construction costs. Those need to be approved for the Act 34 booklet. So once that's approved, they go in the Act 34 booklet, the Act 34 booklet gets put on the website. We advertise it and then we have that February 3rd meeting that's open to the public for discussion. Okay. So before I turn it over to Leanne to talk about that preliminary budget, does anybody have any questions on any of the other stuff there? Okay, Leanne, you wanted to talk a little bit about how you put that together.
Sure. Thanks, Gary. So I'm just going to go through the assumptions that I used to create this. And like Gary said, it's in the very early stages. It's preliminary. It's kind of a worst case scenario. We'll know more once the governor presents his budget ideas in February. And then we always adjust and in May we'll present to you what we're, what we're thinking using those numbers. So an overview of the revenue is we have it, the total number at 40 million, 81,000 and expenses at 40 million, 600,000. So the result to the ending fund balance is a reduction of 500,000. But as I always say, that includes a budgetary reserve and I had that at $250,000 for the year. So that is in there. And for the revenue, so the real estate adjusted index from the state this year is a 3.8% increase for our school district that we can do without using any exceptions. And this budget, I did put an exception of 5% to, so using some of the exception there, we would go up to a tax increase of 5%. But like Gary said, that doesn't mean we're doing it. It's just what I have in this preliminary budget to balance it because I use level funding from the state. So I didn't increase any of our dollars from the state. So we're assuming in February that the governor is going to tell us that we will have an increase in some of our funding from them. So that could be offsetting to that tax increase for us in real estate. I did take into account that we're having a lower collection rate for this year. With COVID, it does seem that for this current year, we are experiencing a little bit lower of our collection rate on real estate taxes. And that being said, a 3.8% tax increase, I just wanted to give it to you what it would be for the average homeowner in our district. So at 3.8%, which is the state adjusted index allowable for our district, it is about $94 for the average homeowner. A 5% increase would be $123 for the average homeowner for the next year on their income, on the real estate taxes. And then going into the expenses, some assumptions that I used, I did the anticipated salary and benefit increases for the year. That being said, healthcare, we are self-funded, so we kind of feel everything pretty, pretty large impact based on what happened this year with no elective surgeries being done in a lot of the hospitals. And then we covered all the costs for COVID for our employees. If they went and got testing, it was at no charge. So it's unprecedented and it's very difficult to kind of predict what next year will be like with that happening the past year. So I did put a 6% increase into our healthcare funding for next year. And all the other expenses, as Gary said, we kind of left them level, no increases on the building supplies and those expenses at the principal's discretion. And I did include the new elementary bond numbers that we had gotten from Brad Remick that were presented. And I also included the new bond refinance numbers from the bond that we just refinanced last month or so. So that pretty much covers what's in the budget. If you guys have any questions, feel free to shoot me an email. It is up on the website for everyone to review and I'll try to get back to you guys with your questions throughout the week.
Leanne, one question for you, the healthcare increase, what do you typically budget each year for the healthcare increase? If it were a non-COVID year prior to this?
Right. Um, last year we actually didn't budget much of an increase because we had been experiencing really level healthcare costs. And with some of the changes we made, we weren't anticipating it because we had made the change to the classified that they were no longer having a $0 deductible. So this past year I actually level expense budgeted that line item. However, in previous years, our consultants have always told us to go anywhere from 8 to 12%. But being that we are self-funded and we have taken so many precautions and educated our employees, we've actually not been experiencing those kind of increases in our healthcare costs.
I have a quick question just to refresh my memory. Is our classified agreement up in a year or is it another year? Is it two years or is it one year? I can't remember where we're at anymore.
I think it's actually longer than that. I want to say it's three or four. Now, we did talk about, and, and we, we do need to do this. And we, Leanne and I have talked about it, but as we get closer here, you know, we had promised classified to look at that. We, we had anticipated a, a specific raise for them. And with COVID, we could not do that. And I know that that was important to the board before to, to do when we could do it. So we do need to have that conversation as we get a little closer here to the middle of the year, school year and see where we are from a, an expense standpoint. But that's a, that's something we need to keep an eye on.
That was the direction I was going in with my question. So thank you for taking it there. I would definitely like to see us open up that discussion as soon as possible with all these big changes coming up. Thanks.
I have a question about the collection rate. Leanne, you mentioned that over the past year specifically, but I think you had mentioned this before COVID hit, that the percentage of, of individuals not paying their real estate taxes was continually increasing. How does our district and that collection rate percentage compare to other districts around us? Are we seeing a similar amount of people or percentage of people not able to pay? Or are we worse off or better off compared to our neighboring districts?
I'll put that out to the fellow business managers in the county and get back to you. Okay, Michelle?
Thank you. Were there any other questions about the budget or any of those items under budget and finance? Did you have more? Am I am pinching on your, are you done, Leanne?
Oh, yeah, I'm done. Uh, yeah, I'm done. Thanks.
I wasn't sure by the way you were looking at me. I'm sorry.
No, I was writing. I'm sorry. That was my.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, so everybody's okay with those items then. Uh, we'll move on to ten, that is buildings and grounds.
Yeah, we just have two, two normal annual approvals for, to run the summer work group program. We obviously didn't get to use our students last year due to COVID. But, uh, you know, if, if we get to a point where we can this year, we'd like to, to have that approval to enlist their help again. The, the first one is for the buildings and grounds and the second one, that is for technology. Those are the typical positions that we would fill over the summer with our kiddos.
Any questions on those items? All right, moving to eleven, that is extracurricular.
Uh, just had a volunteer wrestling coach to be approved once we have all those clearances.
Any questions there? Then we head into item twelve, that is curriculum.
Uh, we have some, we're starting to work on policies again and, uh, which is nice to get back to. So we have a tentative adoption of four policies. Um, and then retirement of policies and the, uh, those policies have a lot to do with, we, if you recall, we are combining the three hundreds, four hundreds and five hundreds into just the three hundreds. So as we, and I forget, it wasn't Brooke, but it was someone in your, with someone that we talked to at Stock and Later, I forget who.
Dr. Dalton.
Was saying that we need to, as we are adopting those three hundreds, we should be retiring the other ones. Uh, so we're catching up on the retirement of those. Um, and then the policy three forty-eight, that first one there. You could see that it's listed one oh four and three forty-eight are now merged. Um, there's a, an agreement for student teachers between Bloomsburg, you know, Northern London. Uh, there, um, also I talked in my, my last update email about some revisions to the school safety plan. I highlighted those in yellow there. They were emailed today and they're now also up on the, on the website for you to take a look at. Uh, nothing major, but the adjustment for the attestation form for lunches. And then also the disinfectant of, of desks and, and how that's carried out. The twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to say that, uh, career planner. Um, and, and we have started to put some work into this and, and wanna really fine tune some things. And I asked Brad to kind of talk about where we are with that. Brad, if you would go ahead and do that.
Sure. I'd just like to highlight that the career planner is more or less a status quo career planner. Only the addition of one new course, which has already been board approved. In addition to that, there's been a resurgence of some tech ed courses that had been dropped off due to scheduling constraints that they, they've brought back. Also, uh, Tech English ten, I believe, was the other course that's been brought back, already approved, uh, has been run before, but wasn't run recently. So you should see the career planner looks very familiar to what was approved last year. In addition, all of the Accelerate V three courses are now listed as separate courses because they are in fact separate. Unlike what V three was previously. So you'll see all those change, the minor changes, additions, and then the rest of it should look very similar to what you've done before. The work that, uh, Dr. Messinger is referring to is, uh, something that I've discussed with the board previously about getting to a point where there's a solid timeline to follow for both curriculum adoption, curriculum cycle, adoption of textbooks and what that process looks like on an annual basis. And in this particular case, we're looking at returning to somewhat of a four-year cycle. So within that, one of the things that we noted about previous cycles that the district has operated on is the inability to make changes outside of the cycle. So what we've proposed and are working on, and I, I hope to be able to present to you soon, is a four-year cycle that also allows for out-of-cycle adoption of curriculum through a process so that there's no, no surprises and that we're sure that what we're putting forward as far as curriculum and, and what we're putting forward into the career planner is in fact the direction that the district wants and needs to go. But also doesn't stagnate us into a process of, you know, the state changes standards on us in a particular year. It doesn't handcuff us that we're not able to also make the change to follow the changes in expectations given to us by PDE or, um, whatever the, the authority is that, that may oversee it. For example, an ag change may not come through PDE but may come through a, a professional organization or, or something along those lines. So we're looking at something that's flexible but still a process and, and can eliminate some surprises that we've experienced in the past.
Any questions about that? I'm pretty happy about putting that together. I know that, that there's been some issues there. It'll give the teachers some guidance too. They'll know when they have to have everything in so that they, you know, administration can look at it and then get it, we can get it to you in a timely manner so we don't feel rushed. Uh, item number six, uh, some junior, lovely valley college junior block students for spring twenty twenty-one face fence. And then also, uh, we did have in the budget this year, not a, not a large amount, but some dollar amount for library books. That list is available to you if you'd like it. Uh, just shoot me an email, we'll get it to you. But they, they have purchased some library books and they are obviously considering the fact that we will consolidate in a, if we are, if we move to that new building, we would be consolidating those libraries. So they're working in conjunction with each other to, uh, to get some new books, which we haven't done in a long time, to be honest. But do it in a manner that when we move over, you know, we're not, we don't have four of the same title. So that's it for number twelve.
Any questions on those items? All right, then moving into item thirteen, that is human relations.
Uh, we have a professional substitute for you to approve. We have two leave requests listed there for you. Um, and then several employments there as well. Um, and then some academic credits, advancement for academic credits listed for you. People that have achieved, uh, different levels in the past few months.
Any questions there? All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order this evening?
Hey, Gary, just a quick question to avoid it next week. I don't know if you're gonna do an update for where we're at with those surveys, the mission statement, the long-term plan, like what we met in, where we're at. Update for next week, if you'd be great.
I have that. I actually have an update. You said, I, I had a little trouble hearing the long-term plan.
The sur, like the surveys that went out, the mission statement, the long-term plan of those groups?
Yeah, I have that listed as a topic for next week. Uh, to discuss. That'll be the primary part of my report.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Next week's meeting is Tuesday, January twelfth at six thirty. And may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
And, and a second, I think was in there. Is there any discussion?
I think we all wanna get out of here, I guess.
This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Have a great evening, everyone.